All right, it is five o'clock. We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. Ask Councilmember Hamilton to bless the meeting.
All right, everybody bow your head. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity, Lord, and thank you for the many wonderful people in here today. We pray that we all come together to make the right choices, not only for our families, but also for every citizen here in Odessa. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. First item on the review council's agenda. On the invitation, I am going to speak just briefly to talk about the offset that was lost in Midland. I have had a blue ribbon put up on the front of our pedestal for a month, just to help remember. Do want to talk a little bit about how proud I am and how proud we should all be, Odessa Fire and Rescue and Odessa Police Department. We have police officers who stood with the officer's body because they stand there 24 hours a day. We had officers go and take calls so the entire police department in Midland would be off. Also saw one of our fire crews. They had just come back from Midland because they were filling in for Midland Fire and manning the station with one of our trucks. You know, that touched my heart and I think our citizens need to know that when we were called upon, we were there. I did speak to Mayor Morales and they were having they were having trouble. I think they did a very good job honoring that officer. The pledges, Councilmember Sprawls is out, so I've asked Councilmember Dean to do that. Then we have the consent agenda. Is there anything on there that you can talk about? Okay, we have the work bids for traffic lights. Kimberly Horn and Professional Services. Councilmember Bryant has an item that he's going to speak about, about renaming part of Business 20 after Ray Stoker. So Trey was on the Transportation Committee and did a lot of fantastic work out here.
This was brought to me by Tryon Lewis and asked that we consider naming that portion after Mr. Stoker, Mr. Stoker passed away last year in August. It was very instrumental in regards to not only the transportation, but all of those relevant in the turnpike system and all those things associated with that. He was even named as in his retirement as President Emeritus of the startup of the whole tax dock situation. Ray was very instrumental in 191. We would not have 191 without Ray Stoker. So this is just to see if we will support the designation of that from East Loop 338 to Business 20 on that to 191 as the Ray Stoker Memorial Highway.
If y'all don't mind, I do want to read the text that Tryon Lewis had sent me on that. Said Dewey's place to recognition of Ray Stoker on the agenda. It would name a segment of Loop 338 for him. So is it the Loop or Business 20?
Section 338.
Section 338.
Between 20 and 191.
Okay, and it says Ray was on the Texas Highway Commission for two terms and had a huge impact on transportation infrastructure in Texas and our area. And then he just went on to say he's not able to attend tonight's meeting, but ask that we please consider that resolution.
Okay, we move to appointment of boards. We do have the nominations for downtown Odessa. I'll nominate Sonder Oof as mine.
I'm going to nominate Susan Thornton.
Hold on one second. Downtown Odessa. Malcolm?
I'm going to nominate Lonnie Lawrence. Did you want to add, who's on it from the council?
There's two people from the council and according to the ordinance, it says it needs one council member. And I'll tell you exactly, of course, it's Councilmember Dean and Councilmember Bryant.
But I said I am looking at you thinking.
Since it's on there, we all might either want to be back there, so I think we'll just move on. Is there anything else for committees?
Annabelle Spencer, were you good with the point compared to the board survey?
And then I had Drew Crutcher on the Traffic Advisory Committee agree to survey.
And council will need to appoint an ODC board member to the downtown Odessa when y'all are ready.
Look at those eyes going.
Apparently it's Gene.
Gene's been there, done a great job. Yeah, 35 years in this downtown.
Gene, I'll say it. Okay, we will move to item three. Receive update from ODC on proposed use of $5 million, subject to appropriate ODC Compliance Committee review and positive recommendation for follow-up projects and costs related to implementing reasonably cross-worked more talented. Hand it over to Ms. Hurt.
Hello, thank you for having us here. This, Malcolm, I'm sorry you were not at the meeting.
Right, I do apologize for that.
No, that's certainly we missed you though. This. In some ways, we are getting the horse before the cart. I will admit that, but I will say to you, being a Latin woman, get on the horse. Dewey, I mean that lovingly. And we have two very, we had a meeting as per the process of ODC money. We had a meeting on Friday of our Compliance Committee. And so what I'm going to do is read to you the recommendation that will be considered by the ODC meeting on Thursday. ODC has not met together as a group concerning this, but on Thursday, we will consider the recommendation of the Compliance Committee is the allocation of $5 million to partner with and provide initial funding for the housing Odessa workers, HOW, and to hire an appropriate professional to aid economic development in Odessa by addressing obstacles to job creation and retention caused by housing shortages for Odessa workers. I can, I know that there are many questions that need to be answered. I know that some of those questions will be answered at our discussion on Thursday with our ODC board. And I know that there is another meeting that is scheduled for March the 20th at 7:30 in the morning, on the PM.
It's in the morning?
It is 7:30 in the morning.
7:30 at night is a little late, but that's what I fill my calendar.
Well, it is at 7:30 in the morning and it is to gather the original stakeholders group that the housing survey came out of, the request for the housing survey came out of. So I know from Thursday's meeting and I know from the March 20th meeting, by the time we come before the city for you to vote on this recommendation in two weeks, on March 26th, some of the questions will be answered and we can hopefully say to you, those that are not answered are in the process of being answered. So that is, that is our recommendation. And I liken this, I liken this to the $11.5 million that the City Council asked us several years ago to set aside for highway funding. There was a list of projects and it was to show faith that the City of Odessa will pony up money to the Highway Department. I liken that to this, or this to that, however the proper English is, that there are not specific specifics, but there is a very broad and general focus for this. The discussion, well, I'll be quiet and ask, do you have any questions? Yes, sir.
Come on.
No.
Burnett, Mr. Burnett, now I know he's, what's his title?
Economic Development.
Are you guys, I'm curious to know why you guys are going outside of him rather than using?
Actually, he is us. He's just not here. He's actually out of town.
But he will be involved in this?
Absolutely, it has been.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
But you're going to have another guy full-time working on, I guess, housing?
The discussion has been to look at hiring a person to focus on the housing piece of it in the Economic Development Department.
I just think everybody needs to, needs to know that the $5 million is $5 million, that it already been set aside for Summit, if you remember. And it hasn't, it wasn't given to them, but it was set aside. So it's already in ODC's reserved funds, that $5 million is. So what they are asking is to be able to reallocate that to this project from that. So this isn't an additional $5 million.
I would say let's use it as a start. How's that? There's definitely a need, no question. And we, I think with the avenues, if we can, if we can so be able to find the proper uses of these funds, I think that we need to go full force ahead.
One correction, it was $15 million that ODC actually allocated for projects. $11.5 has been allocated, but there's still.
Three and a half.
Three and a half still in. So if you're talking about affordable housing, Michael and I will be presenting something to council next time to talk about to look forward towards affordable housing. So, any other questions?
Just one comment on the $5 million. I think Cindy might be able to weigh in a little bit. The $5 million right now is allocated and it's set aside and Summit is currently in bankruptcy. We are hoping that we'll have a resolution probably the end of March. We're still in discussion with Summit's attorneys. Until that, until the bankruptcy has been completed, then that's at that point we can actually release those funds.
My understanding is legally, we have a contract with Summit through the end of this year.
Yes.
And there could be a miracle and they could come back and lo and behold, we need to reward that money to them. So would that be fun?
Go ahead, Cindy.
Well, just to add to that is that there are other funds available in ODC, but I just wanted to clarify that we can't release on that $5 million until the bankruptcy settled or the end of the year.
I don't think the intent is that we write, ODC writes a check to HOW for $5 million. The allocation of that money is it is, it will still go through all the ODC procedures, compliance, ODC accounts.
With that accord, I don't want to wait till possibly end of the year. Is there a way or designation of funds of $5 million, just designate $5 million period in the story? Not for many certain topics?
We're sitting on $14 million, getting in approximately.
Right, and that's why I meant though that.
And so out of that is what the salary package for the new employee would be?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, that is a discussion to be had.
There's something in work with another tax entity that may work out.
Okay. There could be grants of it. I mean, that's why we need to get everybody at the table and start talking.
Did ORMC say that they would commit?
Your council chair?
No, 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 they wouldn't work for that. Well, yeah, yeah, that's less than a dollar. That's less than a dollar an hour.
That is a very important discussion that needs to be.
But yeah, I'd also like to ask, are there areas that you'll be looking at that you'll be, you know, want to look at for housing or? I'm in District 5 and I'm very interested.
I don't want to speak from, I'll speak for myself.
Okay.
I do not want to speak for the rest of the ODC. I think we, the low hanging fruit is look at all this infield. You know, first thing we need to do is to survey all that, get that organized, say this is good, this is bad, oh my gosh, this, and focus in on all of that. I think partnerships with the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation. I think, I think there are so many things that are out there that.
And that was the reason I stated there are, there are a lot of opportunities. It's just often since it's an older area and it's kind of forgotten, but there's a lot of opportunities in that area.
Utility's are there.
Exactly, exactly. That's it, Mayor. That's it, Mayor.
You know, you could be able to say, okay, we do the, we'll get the utilities to, you know, if you certain amount.
We've already done an effort to identify vacant lots, primarily District 1. Two, three hundreds.
Yeah. Vacant, but don't know the, when we start researching, some owners are there, whatever might be, but there are identifications. It's a process. It's starting, let's put it that way.
And somebody's got to slog through all that information and I don't know how else to do it, but get started.
You know, we didn't make sure that we're living.
Leave no rock unturned.
Absolutely. As we gallop by. Any other questions?
Thank y'all. Thank y'all for entertaining us.
Thank you very much, ODC. Appreciate it very much. Item four, amending zoning ordinance. 30 minutes. You're getting to Tom Kurt time now.
No, you know, not going to talk.
Yeah, I was going to say, if you all come here and ask us for a hundred billion dollars, you don't get to come back.
All right, everybody hold it down. We'll go ahead and get started. Go ahead, Mr. Burnett.
You want me to pass them?
Pass them down, please, if you would. Good evening. Back in July of 2016, the City Council at that time adopted Division Odessa. That was the comprehensive plan that we had at that time. And one of the major goals that was set forth in that plan was to amend and update our zoning ordinance. I asked Michael if we could attempt to do this in-house instead of going outside to a outside consultant. And as he answered that, I realized I needed to be a little more careful in what I wished for because I might get it. We got started on this and as a result of all the public input meetings and the information gathering efforts that were associated with the composition of the master plan, the staff has been able to produce an amended zoning ordinance. The main purpose of these amendments is to update and reconfigure the zoning ordinance. We're trying to create a more user-friendly document. What we have right now is just sort of like a conglomeration of things put in different chapters and you have to really hunt and search for what you're looking for. The amendments that were incorporated into the ordinance are intended to provide, like I say, an owner greater flexibility in the use or development of their property. And it'll also provide clarity and explanation to some previously confusing sections of this ordinance. And just to do a summary of some of these amendments, I'll kind of, I'll briefly go through it. Related to annexation, under our current ordinance, property is annexed and the property owner has to wait until that annexation is completely finished before he can zone the property. What we're proposing is part of the annexation process, the owner can request original zoning at the same time and it just goes through as two separate requests under the same presentation. It cuts down on a lot of the red tape and duration of development time. We're also creating two new zoning districts. The first one is residential district called Single Family 4. We came up with this after having several discussions with some of the major developers here in town such as Beaton Bow, D.R. Horton, and folks like this that extensive utilization of special dwelling district zoning. What this Single Family 4 will do is incorporate the development standards that we established for the special dwelling district that had to be established by bringing a special, separate request to council for site plan approval. This is just done through zoning the property of Single Family 4. They get the same 20 feet front yard setback, five feet on the side yard, lot coverage, things of this nature. It eliminates another hurdle that is developed for that.
That process?
Yes, sir. That's, that was our intention on that. And they were all for this. They liked that idea. The next one.
They being the developers?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So you've gone through all these?
Yes, ma'am. We've discussed quite extensively with developers and some.
You spoke with PNC as well, right?
Yes, I'm, I'll get, you're ahead of him. It usually is. The next one that we came up with is called a mixed-use zoning. And what the intention is on that is to allow for a site plan approval to establish flexible development standards for just what it says, a mixed-use development, whether it be light office and retail in association with a higher density residential type development. This is, the intent of this is would be create a more diverse use neighborhood. And this will kind of work similarly as a plan development.
So does this, I mean, are people, is this an issue where people are going to say there's going to be staples right in the middle of my neighborhood?
No, ma'am. No. What this, what this would be is like, right, under our current ordinance, we do not have a mechanism to address this. What this would be is like, well, Larry Bell came to us at one time and said what he would like to do is kind of have what he called a urban center that had office, retail, and it's basically live, work, play, all in one area. Under our current ordinance, we can't address that, but this mixed-use, we could.
Would be ideal for downtown Odessa.
And downtown also, it would be addressed through a mixed-use zoning.
And so Randy, someone couldn't just randomly, because if they had a piece of property, they couldn't just randomly put office, retail development in a residential area?
No, no, they could not. And through this, like I say, with, with the mixed-use, we would go through supplement approval that we present to the council and they would have the final say on what all is incorporated into that development. Other updates that we had was just a couple of uses that we wanted to make an outright allowed use in a retail zoning district was a wireless communication tower and also a mini warehouse. What we found over the years, these two uses are so low intensity that they really don't need to go through the specific use permitting process for this particular zoning district. Just the regular permitting and observation of development standards is all that's necessary for this type of situation. Another thing that we're looking at is the separation of a mobile home park and an RV park. Right now, they're all one thing. Mobile home park standards has a minimum space size of 3,500 square feet. That is way too big for an RV park. So we're creating two separate entities. Mobile home park, all the development standards will stay the same, what they are right now. In a RV park, the minimum space size will be 800 square feet instead of two parking spaces, just one space. We've had several people have positive comments on this.
This is RV?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And these would be allowed uses in heavy commercial, light industrial, and the heavy industrial zoning district. This does provide buffer for these RV parks from any other type of residential development. It does separate those out. Various setbacks and lot coverage requirements that we're proposing to amend. As I've stated previously, the 20 feet front yard setback in the Single Family 4, five feet on the side for that. And also what we're proposing, kind of touching upon what Betsy mentioned earlier, is redevelopment. In a lot of these older parts of town, you have a smaller lot that is less than 100 feet in depth. We're proposing to change the front yard setback on that to 100, I'm sorry, to 20 feet. What this would do is allow the flexibility for the development in there. Right now, with the current setback standard on that, that is tough to do. So with this amendment, we could address that situation and have a greater flexibility for redevelopment on some of this infield development that we're looking at. Another thing that we're looking at, this is one of the clarification things that we want to do. Under current ordinance, when we're talking about lot coverage, the way it reads right now in a residential district, property owner can cover 50% of the rear half of his property. That creates a lot of confusion, not only for the property owner, mayor's looking up and going, what did you just say? For the property owner and even for city staff. What we're proposing is just change it to an outright, in residential district, 70% lot coverage. Clear and concise statement right there.
Whether it's front or back?
Well, no, it has to be within the setback standard. Yes, ma'am, just 70% of the lot has to meet building setback standards. Parking requirements, what we found is like for an efficiency or a one-bedroom apartment, most of these are occupied by a single person. And instead of requiring two parking spaces, we're going to require a ratio of 1.75. 7.5 is a real small car that can fit in like that. But no, 1.75 is a good ratio for, yeah, just like that. Yeah, and also we are addressing parking of larger or AT wheel trucks. They will actually be listed as being only allowed to park in a heavy commercial, light industrial, and a heavy industrial zoning district. This was a request from PD that it actually be put down on paper and shown in the zoning ordinance.
It kind of goes along with that, that we just passed.
Yeah. So, okay.
That was in the code of ordinances. This is in the zoning.
Lowe's on H Street. You've got the bars down here and you see a lot of trucks parking down.
Commercial can't go in there.
Lowe's on H Street, they ran here.
You see them parking trucks, sand trucks are parking, you know, behind the pizza hut.
Oh, are they?
They're tucking those things everywhere. And you see some behind.
But that would allow it because it's lighted up.
No, it's light commercial.
Oh, that's light commercial. I'm with you.
So what this would do.
We would have signs posted saying tow and forced.
Ah, the property owner can do that now. They will do that, yes, sir. And this will allow an officer a lot more freedom to just go in there and ticket the vehicle right there.
What if Lowe's has told them they can do that? Isn't it Lowe's property?
Not under this zoning ordinance. Not under the zoning of it.
Because it's, they're parking down on the other end, you know, where that commercial, what that commercial school used to be.
Another thing that we're looking at is just a, sort of an aesthetic enhancement to our sign ordinance. The support poles would be required and for this particular amendment, we discussed with several of the sign contractors and they stated that this would not add any significant cost to the signs that are being put up, that there would be a decorative pole cover required or a dark hued paint. So you just wouldn't have a bare pole holding up a sign far, however tall in the air. And we've addressed highway-oriented signs. They have a little bit higher height right now, but for greater visibility and more flexibility, we're going to propose that the height can be increased by one foot for every five feet that the sign is brought into the property to a maximum height of 70 feet.
Does that mean the ones that are on the, like, 385 or Brand?
It would be, it would be, yes, Current Highway, Brand, Business 20, Interstate 20, 338, just a highway-oriented sign. There's a, there's a list of highways in the zoning ordinance.
And this is, they may increase.
They may. They don't have to. No, ma'am. This gives them the flexibility to do that if they want to.
It doesn't impact that's already.
It doesn't impact anything that's already there and this, it gives them the flexibility. This has been asked on numerous occasions. We have not had the mechanism to allow them to do it.
For more visibility.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. More so.
Yeah. Uh, another-
I'm sorry, Randy, before you get off that.
Yes.
That means is they could have larger and larger signs to, right?
No, this is just height. This doesn't address the height, the size of the house. Uh, kinda touching on that, Michael, what we're also proposing is for a new shopping center or mall or office center or something like that, uh, as part of the overall, uh, site plan approval, the developer can submit a master sign plan where they get all of that worked out with city staff, final approval by, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission on the site plan approval and council that, uh, uh, this sign package for the shopping center, uh, identification is approved as part of the site plan approval. Instead of having to go through, right now, the very restrictive and, and binding, uh, variance approval process. It's a separate process and it's very constrictive on a developer. And through submission of a master sign plan as part of the site plan, it gives both the city and the developer a greater flexibility to develop a, a sign package for a shopping center. And that way, with it being approved that way, we can add a little bit more aesthetic type situation to it and get final approval on it that way.
Would, would that increase the number of signs typically available on the shopping center?
No, sir, it would. This is really just for identification of the shopping center. It doesn't affect, affect specific, uh, tenants that come in and have their own identification pro, uh, packages for their own lease space. And this is just for the shopping center itself, uh, that goes through the site plan.
And do we have a definition of a shopping center, a shopping mall, or an office center?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Yes, ma'am. And we're not changing any of that. It's, it's already in there. Uh, this we discussed with one of the, uh, one of the eminent commercial developers here in town and he went, "Great idea." He loved it. So I think we're on good solid ground out there, too. Uh, another thing that we're looking at, uh, is, uh, an update to, uh, the site plan procedure, procedure. The original plans would be approved by Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council, and then, uh, minor amendments would go through an administrative staff approval process with appeal to the council. Uh, and then we have just various updates to the language of the ordinance and, uh, the reconfiguration and as stated earlier, this would make the whole document a lot more user-friendly where a citizen could go online, nobody's looking for it, and just go to that segment and not have to look all over. And, uh, also, we will be adding this zoning ordinance to the code of ordinances and this will make a, a lot easier avenue for additional, uh, or future amendments if needed. And this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission back on March the seventh. Uh, they liked the idea, they approved it, uh, recommended we go ahead and bring it to council. And there was not, uh, a dissenting or negative comment from a public presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
How, um, and I know you guys work together, you're in the code enforcement, but I find that, because I've had a lot of phone calls from, um, residents who are complaining now about the zoning ordinance for the trailers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how well are you guys working together to make sure that our zoning ordinance is being aggressive as far as making, bringing everyone into compliance, I guess is what my question is.
Uh, well, we do work together well with, uh, with Marita and Darlene. Uh, you know, and we do receive a complaint, we forward to them and if they have needs something from our end, they get with us. We do work together with them, Mr. Hamilton, and we, we try to-
I just, I, I, uh, not to interrupt, Mr. Hamilton, my apologies. I just don't want us to go through all this back and forth and then we vote, but the workers are not pushing compliance, is what I'm saying.
Yeah. And what we did before we, you know, as, as I stated earlier, we did a lot of, uh, public input meetings and also just information gathering. And part of that information gathering was going to different departments within the city and said, "What can we put in here that would make it easier for you to do your job?" And when they told us what they needed, we incorporated those things in here, too.
On the mobile homes as well, Mr. Hamilton, uh, building inspections won't release the permit if it's in those areas that we, uh, that you guys in, in the ordinance last year approved. So they won't allow them in those specific areas.
So we, what zoning, what is the zoning for mobile home parks?
Well, for a mobile home park, uh, you need, there's two particular zones. It's either general residential or, uh, mobile home zoning. The, the thing about a mobile home park, and this is in our ordinance right now, is mobile home park itself has to go through a site plan approval before it can be established. That comes before you offer them.
Randy, would you talk about what we did last year? The ladies weren't on the council at the time, but what we did in order to restrict or rather limit where someone could put a mobile home?
Yes, sir. What we did last year, uh, Mr. Hamilton came to us and said that, uh, he had a, uh, concern with protecting the integrity of, uh, of foundation or stick-built homes in his district. So, uh, staff and myself, uh, conducted field surveys and, uh, aerial surveys and, uh, determined that there were, uh, four major areas on, in District One that, uh, at present were zoned for mobile home development, but the majority of the homes or development in those districts were foundation-built homes. These were areas that needed to be protected, the integrity of these foundation-built homes needed to be protected against the further intrusion of mobile homes in that, in those areas. And there were four of them. And it was a, uh, seventy percent, wasn't it? Seventy percent, uh, foundation-built homes or greater. So those four, we went ahead and resomed all of those to, uh, from general residential to single-family three, which just allows foundation-built homes to be located in those districts.
Appreciate it.
We also added, uh, uh, updated or, or upgraded development standards for mobile homes, where they're required now to have a, an enhanced skirting. They're in, they have, required to have a permanent entrance into a mobile home and have a porch with, uh, railings and support structures. So we did add that also. And that affects not only District One, but all mobile home locations within the city or district. Any new ones.
Within city limits?
Yes, ma'am.
Any new ones?
New ones.
The ones to a grandfather.
Yes, ma'am.
So have you seen any type of an increase in the mobile homes or requests for development of mobile home parks?
Not a mobile home park. We've had-
Only for, only for individual lots?
Individual lots. We've had several requests for RV, or that's why we're proposing the breakout of those, so we can address that situation.
Do you, uh, just right off the top of your head, with all these trailer parks and all these RVs and stuff parked here in Odessa, or of course, the old, yes, sir, what type of opportunity are we losing out as far as revenue, uh, ad valour, tax revenue? What do we, because I know we're heavily, am I right? We're heavily dependent on sales revenue right now.
Right.
What's, what's the percentage?
Uh, we're about thirty-five percent sales tax.
Sales tax, what city do you recommend?
Property taxes, about twenty, twenty and a half.
No, it's a little higher.
Sixteen, yeah, sixteen percent.
A little higher than that, Mr. Hamilton.
And some other things, you know, as far as how much, I have, firstly, I have had, like, three requests for an RV park, which would be in the zoning districts that I discussed earlier. Right now, this property that's set in vacant, we're not getting anything off of it. With an improvement there, there will be, uh, not only a property tax increase, but there would also be a, uh, sales tax increase with that. So, I mean, like I say, I know with three of them that's come through our office that right now, we don't have a mechanism to get them there.
I, I, I would just simply caution that, that we, we need to be cognizant of what we allow because at some point, um, they may not be as popular and so what you might end up with is a lot of vacant mobile homes. I remember when I first started the city, my, one of my first tasks was to get rid of a bunch of mobile homes that were left over from the late seventies and eighties.
Yes. And that's why we've structured the RV park the way we did in the zoning ordinance is that it's required to have, uh, site plan approval. And one of the conditions we can put on a site plan approval is, once it's, uh, not being used as an RV park, it needs to be returned back to its original condition.
Randy, one of the things that might help with that, and it's something that we're actually working with a developer who's gonna be on the outside of the city limits but wants water and sewer access, uh, is put some standards in the mobile home park that would be similar to what you would find in the residential area.
Right.
So, uh, that makes some, require some aesthetic improvements, require other things that would help establish the integrity or maintain-
HOA, right.
HOAs, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. And see, we can do that through the site plan approval process. Previously, uh, you know, and, and, uh, I would say, uh, before I got here, and, but my goodness, I got here, probably, streets weren't even paved yet.
Lowe's is handy, you have to get it.
I know. I mean, and for he parted the Red Sea and I kept going across.
Yeah, that leads you to Odessa.
I got Odessa, yeah. But, uh, there just wasn't that much attention paid to detail or aesthetics. And that's been one of my, you can ask a lot of these developers here, I hound them on doing that stuff. I really do. And a lot of this will add the mechanism for us to be able to do that.
Okay, so in a mobile home park, those things that we're requiring, they've gotta have the permanent steps and entry. What has that had? What is the cost of that?
It's, it's really-
I mean, I, I understand, but I just wanna know, we're, we're so focused on trying to get prices affordable.
Yeah. It's not a, uh, prohibitive cost increase to upgrade that property like that.
Like how much?
Oh.
Five hundred dollars.
I would say five hundred to maybe seven fifty or so, something like that.
And without it, just-
I wouldn't be able to quote that.
But without it, it really takes away a lot from it.
Yeah, it's definitely not prohibitive.
I, I agree.
We discussed this also with several of the mobile home dealers before we did it. It's, you know, we didn't just go into it blindly. We, we did research.
Yeah. I just think if somebody says, "Well, now they're trying to make mobile homes cost lower," I wanna have a feel for what that's for.
But you know, other than just the look, it's also a safety factor that's involved.
Yeah.
Not only for the resident, but for response.
Yeah. Well, and like I say, in some of the other deals that we've been in the United States, uh, the reduction of the front yard setback on a lot of these older properties, uh, that gives us the mechanism to, to look at these as a legitimate redevelopment, uh, option that we have now, cause they'd have to jump through so many hoops right now to get it done that, you know, if some of these folks would be thinking, "Gosh, it's not worth my time and effort to jump through these hoops." This would make it a lot more streamlined process for them to do.
Thank you for doing that, cause that's something that we've all been concentrating on, is making it as easy as we can, but doing what we need to do.
Yes.
Also, thank you for saving the money to the city, cause otherwise, if we'd have heard that out, that'd have been another, another disaster.
We'll buy you lunch, Randy.
Michael, buy you lunch.
Well, that's some good help. I can see that.
Okay, Tim gets to go to it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions?
That's it. Thank you. Out of five, reckless ranch golf course bathroom options.
Council, if you remember, some time ago, we had a presentation or we had a group from the golf course advisory committee, and they came in and they talked about some of the needs within the golf course. One of those that was identified was a bathroom on the, on the back, back nine, Steve?
Yes, sir. Back nine, sixteen?
Yes. And Steve is gonna talk to us about a couple of options for a bathroom on the golf course. And we can talk about how we fund that as well, because this is totally in the budget.
I'm, I'm ready.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I got in the camera shot.
I'm gonna take action or get off the park.
All right, you got mine, Steve.
I was good.
I was good. All right. The first picture is option number one, and that is the portable toilet in the enclosure itself. And we were putting these in some of our parks because, uh, easy to clean, if they get vandalized, put in a new one, maintenance is great on these. Um, we also have included in the price of that, the, uh, annual service for two of the portable, the portable toilets to be serviced. That'd be once in the wintertime, once a week, twice during the, uh, the summertime. And I also included, plus a little sidewalk to get up to it in the car, but that's gonna run thirty-seven thousand four hundred and then about six thousand dollars a year to the budget for this option. Now, we did look at the location that Chris was, um, looking at putting a, a restroom. We have no utilities at all in that area. We're talking a mile to get potable water to that. The big difficulty, too, is we also sit on solid rock out there and we probably have to diamond it to get a water line. It is awful. It's really, really difficult. And plus, we have high-pressure gas lines and two sets of easements that we'd have to cross. So putting a restroom fully functional with potable water and electricity is really kinda out of the question. And we came across the green. Go ahead, Scott.
That's good.
Yeah, it's a, yeah. The green flush model.
Kinda like Green New Deal.
It's a Green New Deal.
The mayor would like that.
Um, approved by President Trump. I know that, um, Michael loves that.
No worries.
The green flush restroom, this is Durango Two is, is the model. And this would have a, a side for men, a side for ladies, there's, uh, attached the floor plan. And the ways these work, they're independent, they have a, uh, captured basin tank underneath them that we would draw out of on occasion when it ever filled up. Two hundred and fifty gallon tank, potable water that runs the sinks, and there's a solar panel on top that runs lights. So it's an independent operating system that would be out on number sixteen. We can run the toilets off of non-potable water. We have an irrigation line, a main line, pretty close by, um, within probably twenty to forty feet or less. And, uh, we could tie into that to run the toilets, but we would have to have potable water for the sinks and we would put that in the tank itself. Um, that whole setup would run about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. These are two recommendations to consider that came from the golf course advisory board. Uh, it's been a priority, um, for the users of the course. I've had lots of comments, God, our bushes are not big enough to cover everybody and take in the business out there, so it's getting to be kind of a problem. And, um, they, they have really, this has been an issue since we've opened, actually, that people have always desired on the back nine, um, a restroom facility. We don't have this budget at this current time and, um, it would be something that we would have to allocate funds, yeah.
And so what we were looking for the council is to give us some direction. Cindy will walk us through a couple of funding options, options, but it's not currently in the budget and we've got a couple of options to consider. If this is how you would like us to proceed and we can, we can get this out for bid.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Well, your first running option is you let the golf team play for it and it goes farther in the hole. That's option one.
That's option one.
Second option is, obviously, we have some excess sales tax dollars coming in this year, so you could do an operating transfer out of general fund to the golf fund to pay for that. So otherwise, it's pull the money out of general fund reserves, which really doesn't make sense since you have the excess sales tax dollars. You could just do an amendment to the budget to pay for it.
Well, I'm gonna ask the ladies. I mean, it's ladies that want this bathroom, because guys, you know, anyway.
We want y'all to want these, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which, which one of you is y'all?
You act like it doesn't matter.
But I mean, which one?
Hands down, it would be the more expensive one. Hands down. And, uh, and that's just because porta-potties stink. I mean, they-
They can't-
They stink.
And you can wash your hands in this one.
Yeah.
It's sort of a Marie's commercial. They're not out there.
Yeah. And, and you know, really, I mean, I know, there's some other options. We can put hand sanitizer dispensers and stuff, you know. I don't know, I don't, how much money do we have, Cindy? We don't have to pay for either one? Well, when Tom comes to visit. Well, yeah, you're right. When Tom's here, we don't have time for anything.
You certainly have funds to cover that cost, but that's what you choose to do. No, the funds, you certainly have funds to cover that cost, but that's what you choose to do.
I, I think that, you know, see, it's a public golf course and it's used a lot. It's the same reason I think we need to have it, even if it doesn't make money. And this is just, this is an amenity that it's not like, you know, this isn't like this huge big thing we're spending. This is really a necessity. And, and I, yeah, public health, and I agree with you, true. You know, I think it, I think if this was a men's-only course, the porta-potties would be great. But it's not.
I have to agree with you. Tomorrow, what do you think?
You know, I don't, I don't golf, but I would like for the ladies who do and the men. Yeah, there are times those bushes don't do what you need them to do.
Oh, yeah, they do.
Okay, so, we're going to-
Well, what, what do y'all think? I mean, I want to know what you, what you think on this. Oh, yeah, he's, oh, sorry, your cashmere. Here, over here. Matt taking care of-
We used porta-potties last year at the spray park out of U T P.
Yeah.
We had a constant problem of smell. We have them playing three times a week, but as much use as that facility.
You've got to remember, too, not to butt in, Scott, you know, with the heat in the summertime, I think the smell does present itself a lot more. It's going to be out in an isolated area on the course. And, you know, with the wind constantly blowing, I can see it drifting, you know, all different directions. I mean, I'm happy with either one, and I know the golfers will be happy with either one. But, and really personally, I think for safety reasons, I think it's best to have a men's and a women's versus two porta-potties because the women know exactly where to go and the men know where to go. And I think-
Neither of the two should make.
And the one in the middle is not the, yes, your, yes, your dealer, family room, it's the utilities. But you have a separate one for the both.
Does this have HVAC or is it just open-air ventilation? That's how the road subparks are, the rest areas are, and I think they work fine.
Steve, I know this is going to creep everybody out, but is there any possibility of a snake or anything crawling in any of these vents? Or is this going to be accessible to?
Wildlife.
Wildlife, yeah, that's whatever.
Probably not the big ones, maybe your blinds and spiders and stuff.
We'll definitely take a look at that in the designing process with these folks.
But nothing's going to crawl into the toilet.
As, as normal setup on the course, you know, myself or the staff and the pro shop or the maintenance captain, they'll be, they'll be monitoring those on a daily basis. So, you know, usually multiple times a day. So, I don't think there's going to be any of those issues.
Most of our vents always require quick considering where the screens over all of our vents. But always in this scenario, and what I've seen in our parks, as well as our other bathroom, blackwood spotters are much more intense than what the snakes are.
Yeah.
So, we, we keep up a pretty hefty program of spraying blackwood spotters.
And jackrabbit, that's for all cats, jackrabbits, coyotes, and geese.
All right, I'm going to wrap this part up because we've got seven minutes.
We'll proceed, we'll come back with the council for the recommendations.
Great.
Thank you.
We've got five minutes.